This is the meeting of the Mobile Planning Commission for July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I would like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. In the public hearing, agenda item is called, the applicant makes their presentation, commission members ask questions, members of the public make their comments to the commission. Only four people may speak in favor of an agenda item and four people against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. At one minute remaining, you will have, you'll hear a warning bell or beep prompting you to summarize your comments. After opposition speakers have finished, the applicant is allowed a two-minute rebuttal. If you do intend to speak, come to the podium, speak into the microphone and provide your name and address for the record. Direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant, staff or audience. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into the deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. Results of the meeting can be learned from the planning department. If some issue arises during the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has the discretion to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, a commissioner may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not mean that the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. However, depending on the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal, even if there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member accuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead. The planning commission makes final decisions on subdivisions with appeals of these decisions to circuit court. The planning commission is strictly a recommending body for rezonings, conditional use permits and planned developments. The city council makes the final decision on these applications. All appeals of city council decisions are directly to circuit court. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn your microphones on when speaking. We will have the roll call. Chairman, Mr. Stubbs is not here, I'm filling in. So y'all bear with me today. Mr. Jennifer Denson, not here. Mr. Harry Brizlin.
Here.
Mr. Larry Dorsey.
Here.
Mr. Chad Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Matt Anderson. Mr. Nick Amberger. Mr. Josh Woods.
Here.
Mr. Kenny Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Ellie Edwards.
Here.
That establishes a quorum. Alright, we'll move on to the agenda. Agenda item number one, this is an extension of the approval of a one-lot subdivision at forty-one twenty-five, forty-one thirty-seven, forty-one fifty-one and forty-two oh-three Moffett Road. And we have a recusal from Mr. Nichols. Is the applicant present? Any comments, concerns with the staff report?
Andrew Hodges with Row Engineering. There's no additional comments, just wanted to state that the due diligence period was extended. They, the applicant does plan to move forward with the one-lot sub and eventual development of the sub.
Anyone here to speak for agenda item number one? Anyone to speak against it? Moving on, agenda item number two. This is a subdivision of one lot, seventy-two ten Fourteenth Street. Is the applicant present? And we have a recusal from Mr. Dorsey. Mr. Bird?
Yeah, trying to find a place to lay this down. Jerry Bird, Bird Surveying, for the owner who is in attendance. Simple one-lot subdivision combining nine lots of record. That is the small area down here. The property fronts on Fourteenth Street. It's a thirty-foot right-of-way and it is paved. We are proposing dedication of a ten-foot widening strip which is required with. Lincoln Boulevard has never been opened. It's still unimproved, it's just dirt. It only extends at present one hundred feet from the right-of-way of Fourteenth Street. We've asked that the ten-foot widening strip, the required ten-foot widening strip on Lincoln Boulevard to be waived since the city or the county or whoever paved Fourteenth Street did not pave that, didn't see fit to. And probably because it, it flows down in. I don't think it would ever go any further than this property line. All of this green area, eleven acres on this church property drains into a hole right at the north end of Lincoln Boulevard. To extend that street would be expensive for anyone, the city, an individual or church if they wanted to try to bring it in. Don't think it would ever be extended. As such, too, we've asked for the waiver of the twenty-five-foot radius at the northwest corner of Fourteenth Street and Link, uh, and Lincoln Boulevard. Because that would be not necessary either. Other than that, we okay with.
That's the only comment will be, I guess that's number seven.
Sure.
At number seven is what you're seeking a waiver on, just the corner radius?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the engineering had a comment to require a, a, a less, uh, large radius, a fifteen-foot radius is what we required in our comments, so are you okay with a fifteen? Foot, would that be okay? Are you trying to eliminate that also?
I'd like to eliminate the radius on the corner, it's not going to be necessary.
Engineering has no problem with eliminating that fifteen-foot radius requirement.
Okay.
The, the widening, I cannot speak to that.
Mr. Chairman. Question for engineering, so you said that Lincoln Boulevard is unimproved?
No, unimproved. It's just dirt. Fourteenth Street is paved.
Can, can engineer check that? Cause I'm looking at Google Maps and it looks pretty paved to me.
I think he's, he's talking about the north side of that intersection.
Oh, oh, okay, 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 I see. Oh, okay. Understood, okay. I was like, what, what are we, what are we trying to do here?
Third drive lane to him, yeah, we're intentioned by him.
Okay.
Alright, uh, anyone else here to speak in favor of agenda item number two? Anyone here to speak against it? Uh, moving on to number three, this is a subdivision of two lots at sixty-seven oh-four Autumn Ridge Drive.
How y'all doing today? Um, the subject property.
Name and address for the record.
Rashawn Figures, Figures Construction and Development, twenty-four seventy-six Commercial Park Drive.
Goodness, figures.
The subject property, um, we're talking about today was originally a private-owned pool and pool house maintained by the homeowners association. Over time, the facility fell into disrepair and became a blight on the community. In response, the city of Mobile through its Public Nuisance Abatement Authority acquired the property and substantially, uh, demolished the existing structures after a formal vote by the city council declared the site a public nuisance. Following that action, our firm acquired the parcel from the city and completed the first hope house to be built in West Mobile. This project was intentionally designed as a market rate home despite being a part of an affordable housing program to ensure it blended seamlessly with the character and the quality of the surrounding neighborhood. The home was well-received and had no adverse impact on the existing community. Building upon the success of this initial project, we are now proposing the construction of two additional homes on the remaining portion of the properties. These homes are intended to provide high-quality housing for essential workers, specifically a teacher firefighter or a police officer will be living in these homes. We have taken care, uh, to maintain all existing neighborhood setbacks and architectural standards in our design. The only variance we seek today relates to a minimum lot's, uh, square footage requirement by the city. As both proposed lots fall slightly below the city's standard threshold. Uh, however, we believe this minor deviation is justified by the substantial public benefit these homes will provide to our community and our essential workers. Completing the development of this corner will third, thoughtfully designed homes that support those who serve our community represents a meaningful and impactful investment in the neighborhood's future. Any question?
We were gonna ask. We, we, we would ask that it's fifteen, but you know, um, we, we could work with it if it didn't. But we would ask for the adjustment. Cause it's twenty-five, uh, foot setbacks and then you have the twenty-five foot setback off the corner, which makes that first one a, a challenge.
So Rashawn, to be clear, you'd be seeking a, cause it's a corner lot, you'd be seeking a fifteen-foot setback on front and quote-unquote side, or just?
If we could just get it on the front, I would be happy with that.
Meaning in, in the front, to clarify, the Autumn Ridge road frontage or the gas light, okay?
The gas light would be, would be fine because it would marry the other house on the other side.
Okay, so just a, so fifteen feet?
On Autumn Ridge.
Okay.
That would make that corner lot more functional.
Then, and just for clarification, the intent here would be to build, uh, two houses, kind of similar nature, same purpose as the house that you constructed just to the north, correct?
The house that we constructed for the north was the hope problem, so you, you, uh, you take a section eight voucher and create it to a mortgage.
Right.
These two homes on Autumn Ridge will be teachers, firefighters and policemen, so it won't be on the exact same program.
Okay.
Only teachers, firefighter and policemen will be sold these houses.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, good.
Uh, just to point out that the setbacks are actually part of the dimensional standards of the UGC. Uh, they're not part of the subdivision regulations, so in order to waive or reduce those requirements, they would have to get a variance. And those go before the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
We'll take it like it is.
One more step in the process, Mr. Figures. Uh, any other questions or comments by the commission? Is anyone else here to speak in favor of this agenda item? Is anyone here to speak against this agenda item? Anything, we'll move on. Agenda item number four, this is a request to waive the construction of sidewalks along Monk Avenue at seventy-seven thirty-five Monk Avenue. Is the applicant, oop, there you are.
Yes, uh, I'm Vance Lacoste, Bethel Engineering, uh, thirty-two thirty-three Executive Park Circle, Circle. Representing my client Jeff Frame, who has purchased this property on Monk Avenue to, uh, put in a, um, a boat and RV storage facility, most of it outside storage. He does have a proposed building with five bays with roll-up doors, no office space, no onsite staff. Uh, basically an electric gate controlled, you know, by an app that allows people in and out, uh, for their storage. And requesting a sidewalk waiver, this area, um, you know, has, has been undeveloped for a long time, several lots in a row here. It's a forty-foot right-of-way and it's really been grown up and been an area that's been a homeless encampment for a while. So he's trying to get in there and improve this area. And, um, you know, really, I, I understand, um, per the engineering comments, a sidewalk can fit. It is a narrow right-of-way, so it'll probably be off the right-of-way. It can fit, but the slope of the property just beyond the sidewalk gets pretty steep. And really, the big issue we have is with the new UDC, if the sidewalk is required, then what comes that, comes with that is a requirement that that sidewalk be connected to the building. And so that connection of the sidewalk to the building becomes pretty problematic. It would require a lot of ramps and landings and handrails and switchbacks to get down that steep slope to a building that has no office. It has, it's five roll-up doors. And so you're basically requiring a sidewalk that like goes to nowhere and then an extra gate with an extra controller. And so it creates a hardship by placing a sidewalk out front, it means we have to build a sidewalk to the building. Um, and so that's probably the biggest issue that we have here. And, um, would request that the waiver be considered, uh, to allow this project to move forward.
Any questions or comments by the commission or staff? Anything else? Alright, is anyone else here to speak in favor of agenda item number four? Anyone here to speak against it? Moving on to agenda item number five, this is a conditional use permit uh, for short-term rental in a R1 single-family residential suburban district at twenty-three sixteen Hillwood Drive West. Name and address.
Ryan Kozlowski, R and P Investing at twenty-three sixteen West Hillwood Drive. Requesting a conditional use permit to rent the single-family residence at that location on a short-term basis. It's been operating as such for a while and there's been no issues. And then I did have a comment in the staff report, I noticed it stated that the location did not meet the parking requirements and the garbage screening, and I just wanted to address that there's plenty of parking and space for that to be screened.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
So, so did we get photos that illustrate that the garbage cans are screened?
What is that, sir?
Sorry, he was addressing staff.
I was addressing staff.
Um, no, we have not gotten those and that's why those were in there, just to kind of make a point that, um, if this is approved on the, um, considerations agenda, um, there are conditions of approval prepared, which would include the revision of the site plan to show the parking, the provision of the, um, screening for the trashcans as well as photographs of that screening.
Got it.
Yeah. Mr. Kozlowski, the staff report makes reference to, um, a few items, I think that weren't turned in, I believe there were some photos. Do you have a chance to look at that or turn any additional information on?
No, sir.
Uh, one question I have, looking at the staff report, there, there's references to refuse garbage and it says that the site does not meet the criteria for being screened from view or no closer than twenty feet from any property line. No closer than a hundred feet from any dwelling, can you speak to that at all?
Yes, it meets those requirements, I guess I just don't have a photo specifically documenting it. The lot itself is over an acre and then it actually has the adjoining lot next to it that's undeveloped and unbuilt-in. So there's plenty of room to meet the requirements, I guess I just don't have a specific photo representing that.
I've got a question for staff. Probably more global in nature, I believe this is the second conditional use permit application that's come before us. Uh, I see that the staff recommendation is to hold over until the, uh, August meeting. I guess, do we have, uh, the authority to approve subject to the applicant meeting the conditions, uh, outlined that are not met? If staff signs off on those at a later date? Like if he submits the information after the meeting and satisfies the criteria, then can the?
Uh, yes, sir, and that's the way that the considerations were written. If you adopt those findings of fact based off of, um, his description of the request at this meeting, as well as the conditions of approval that were proposed, which includes the, um, you know, the revisions, revision of the site plan, the photos, screening, et cetera, then yeah, it can be approved.
Alright, any other questions or comments by the commission? Anything else? Is anyone else here to speak in favor of agenda item number five? Anyone here to speak against it? Seeing no hands, we will close the public hearing session and move to the deliberation session. On agenda item number one, I have a recusal from Mr. Nichols. This is an extension of approval of a one-lot subdivision. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, sir, to staff recommendations, second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That meeting passes. Moving to agenda item number two, we have a recusal from Mr. Dorsey. This is a subdivision of one lot at seventy-two ten Fourteenth Street. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, sir, to staff recommendations, uh, waiving condition number seven. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And, uh, item passes. Number three, this is a subdivision of two lots at sixty-seven oh-four Autumn Ridge Drive.
I have a tech, maybe a technical question, do we need to waive sixty-eight for, to, to make the variance process easier, or does that, is that gonna take care of itself with the variance? Cause sixty-eight references the UDC, if they're waiving a requirement from, from the UDC, does that mean sixty-eight doesn't matter, or do we need to waive it?
Oh, no, if, if they, um, so sixty-eight just states that the building setback has to be illustrated, it does not give the dimension of that. So if they did go for the variance and, uh, or wanted to go for the variance, they could request of the planning commission to do so, that you guys amend that, um, wouldn't be necessarily a waiver, but there would be an additional condition that we wouldn't sign off on the plat until the variance was approved, yeah.
Okay, now move to approve, sir, to staff recommendations.
So then number four could be amended to say, just to add on, as, um, you said, or variance, or obtain a, or obtain a variance.
Okay, okay, yeah, I would move to approve, sir, to staff recommendations, amending number four as we just discussed with staff. Second.
Properly, properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The item passes. Moving on to number four, this is a request for a sidewalk waiver at seventy-seven thirty-five Monk Avenue. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, sir, to staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The item passes. Agenda item number five, this is the conditional use permit for short-term rental at twenty-three sixteen Hillwood Drive West. Is there a motion?
Uh, I would move that we hold this over until August, the August twenty-first meeting. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the holdover is approved to the next planning commission meet. Alright, that concludes the deliberation session. We've got a few items of other business. Uh, looks like we have a vote for to call for a public hearing on August twenty-first for the proposed amendment to the subdivision regulations for the historic avenue overlay. Any staff update on what we're admitting?
Yes, so the historic avenue overlay was approved, this is just to add it into the subdivision regulations, the portions that affect those regulations so that anytime someone comes through, they don't have to also come back to you guys to get approval because they're adding to regulations.
Okay.
So it's just putting it up.
Yeah, so what we approved, there's no changes to what we.
Yeah, it's no changes, we're just putting it in subdivision regulations.
Alright, uh, we vote on this, no one? We vote to add it? Yeah, okay, we're just gonna have a public hearing, alright? Um, we've also got to, we have some minutes to approve, this is the August third, August seventeenth, September seventh and September twenty-first meetings, all in two thousand and twenty-three.
Move to approve the minutes from August and September of two thousand and twenty-three. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. I was there.
I was here. So, so Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Yeah, so, so Doug, before the meeting, we were talking about, um, these conditional use STR situations. And I, I tend to think we need to have some, some kind of, you know, some, a little bit more policy around it rather than just receiving, you know, a shotgun of STR conditional use permits. There's not, we don't really have any, and there's no real guidance around it at all, I mean, I, I guess that would come from the city council, but, um, I don't, I don't have a tremendous amount of comfort receiving an arbitrary number of conditional use permits about an unknown potential land use. You know, the volume is completely unknown, I'm not against STRs, I've got it one across the street from my house, I don't have any issues with. But i- if you aggregate the impact over the scale of the entire city and we don't have a set, there's not really a set standard, everything's case by case, it, it can feel arbitrary even if, even if the process is not. And maybe that sounds a little paranoid, but that's just how I feel about it.
I would leave that task to Jim Rossler and Bert Hoffman, cause they're, Jim helped write the ordinance and Bert understands it a heck of a lot better than I do. Or Shayla, I didn't know, I didn't know you were here, thank you.
I would say that, uh, the, the council, um, drafted an ordinance and we did our level best to try to make it, whatever adjustments we needed to make it, go through a, a process, but some of those policy decisions, um, I think we would have to revisit, uh, with them. My, my hope would be that at, at some point in time, um, we evaluate where we are with this ordinance and staff could make some recommendations up, up to the council, but, um, we're doing our best to, um, put into, to practice what was adopted at the time of the adoption of the Unified Development Code, so.
So what I'm, well, I mean, the way I'm approaching it is, this is kind of a quasi-judicial entity, we, this isn't a policymaking entity. So if we, if we go down a course and we start treating through our own norms and mores how these conditional use permits get treated, that is a de facto policy that I think shouldn't rest here personally. Anyway, I'm off my soapbox now.
I, I'll just admit to one thing, that in those, in the actual staff report, we made those tables with the red and the green to kind of just make it visually, I guess, easier to understand whether or not they're gonna meet those criteria. I don't know if they're helpful, but right, in which case, you know, the ordinance states they have to be denied, but, um, I'd definitely be willing to work with our team to work with you guys to make those recommendations.
I, I, I think the table was helpful, I mean, I, I'll echo what Mr. Anderson said, I mean, we, we really don't have any discretion on this. And i- is the staff, are, are we inspecting these sites? I mean, like this scenario, you know, is it twenty feet, we have no idea where, you know, garbage is held. And, and not to say we can't trust you, we just have no discretion in this, i- is, the way this is written.
Well, well, so far we, the, the volume of it, I mean, this is literally the second one, so, um, to say that we've, we've inspected, I mean, I think we've looked at the two that have come in front of us. Um, and then of course, if we receive a complaint, then we go out to address the, of the complaint, which typically says that you need to go through this process, um, if it's your intent to continue to operate. Um, but so far, we, we've only been tested with the ones that we've been presenting to you, so. But so far, w- we've only been tested with the ones that we've been presenting to you, so. The business license process. They, they are coming in- No, not saying that.
Supposed to-
A- a- as we have had, uh, short-term rentals who want to come into compliance with all city requirements to include business licensing as a part of that procedure, then they've gotta essentially get approval from this body before a business license is issued. So the, the burden has been put on them to come forward. Now, if we, if we receive a complaint or, or aware that one is in violation of our requirements, then we will go out and notice them or the mid-business license coming in. Correct, that's, that's how that complaint is ma- Correct. Exactly. Correct, that, that's how it essentially is working right now. That is, has been our concern since the ordinance was adopted all along.
And then from, um, a different aspect, you know, we've had these conditional use permits with, um, aftercare centers and, uh, or daycare centers being used in houses, and I've always made the comment that these ride in perpetuity with the property. Is this the same way with short-term rental, that that property will be in perpetuity along with that deed, allowed to be operated in that manner, or are there one-year provisions? Or after that owner decides, um, you know, R and P investments, cause it doesn't look like it's a local homeowner or anything. It was literally an investment LLC. Are, are we gonna have people coming in and buying up investment properties and using them as, you know, rental properties, uh, along Dog River? In perpetuity.
Well, to answer your initial question, uh, once a conditional use permit is issued, it runs in perpetuity with the property. Yeah. The conditional use permit, what, when we adopted the UDC, what we previously would have had was a, a planning approval process. So to conform with our state-enabling legislation and those requirements, we moved away from planning approvals and went to conditional use permits and special exceptions. So what we're-
Does the planning commission have the right to limit that? And say that it's only, you know, issued to the current business owner or for a year or anything like that? Correct.
I'm not understanding reading this thing, with this refuse requirements, we're, I mean, we're gonna ban these things in practice in the vast majority of the city. If it's a hundred feet from a house, two hundred feet from the property line, you know, if it was one or the other, I think it would be one thing, but the way I read this, the policy of the, you know, that- I'll, I'll ask one of my favorite council people. I mean, it, it feels like we're, we've essentially banned these things in an extremely large percentage of the city. Yeah, sure.
And this is all new for us too. I mean, that you're the second application we've had on this. And this is all new for us too. I mean, that you're the second application we've had on this. Yeah, well-known city. Came from the city, cause I reached out prior to closing. I wanted to make sure I'd be able to get approved and I looked at y'all's ordinances before purchasing. And I inquired about it and that was the answer I received.
Yeah.
And none of this is enforced, it's not required. You don't have to get a business license and then two years later I got this phone call saying it's not being enforced. I mean, luckily my property meets those, but if not, I don't know what position I would be in.
And I guess some of the assumption that it was a neighbor that brought it to the attention of the city then?
No, I think they reached out to me because I initially inquired recently. So I've been, I've had a, they, they told me all I had to do is set up an excise tax account. So I've been paying the taxes on the short-term rentals this entire time. They just never created the business license or enforced that aspect.
Okay.
So I was already in the system. They already knew I was operating.
Okay.
As I stated at the, wh- wh- once a, a applicant is trying to initiate a business license, then that is where we are notified and triggered.
Okay.
But I think, I mean, in a matter of time, it's gonna be, you know, title companies, insurance, I mean, somebody's gonna start bringing this to the owner's attention. And I mean, I, I there were plenty of these things operating before we adopted this too, so, I mean, it but we don't have any discretion on this, is what it sounds like.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Refuse. Alright, any other discussion? I think that closes all our other business, uh. Alright, we'll adjourn. I think that's how I'll do this.